I think we're gonna get the policy meeting underway. And we were going to begin with our first policy that we're looking at. It should be noted that there were some items that we received information about that have been changes to laws and legislation that we that will be coming up but weren't added to this because we're waiting for Neola to kind of give some guidance. So some of the items that we received, the school board members, an email regarding changes that need to be made coming up have not reached us yet but will be coming in the near future. So the first policy we are going to look at today would be Policy one hundred definitions. Stacy, can you give us some guidance here? Because I looked through it and I see a lot of this just seems like what we have now, I know.
It is. They just, all the, that's in green is what they have recommended for changes. As opposed, and so that's what the the recommendation from Neola is. There are some options there that we can use or that we can, we can choose. And, and so I'll leave it, I think there's just at the very beginning, there's some options. And then on page three, there's some options.
The beginning where the blank is?
Uh, yeah.
Insert the corporation name?
No, no, no. As usual, school boards.
Sorry.
Bylaws or policies, bylaws and policies, I believe it's bylaws and policies. I believe is what we want to select there.
Oh, corporation.
First, very first thing, right underneath definition.
Oh, oh, I see, very first, okay, yes, okay.
Okay.
Okay, and are you suggesting we use the administrative guidelines also? Not more, what's your suggestion there or?
Yeah, I, that's what I think I would use.
And then I see that inserted about executive session, but I thought we already had that. Hasn't that already been included, was that included in a different policy? Is that, and it just is added to the definitions now or?
I think it's just added to the definitions, I've already guessed.
Okay.
And then I put the corporation name in.
I think clarified in that last sentence, I think the section, some questions that are present. That raised in the past. But I always felt the statute was broad enough for what it says anyone who was wish to feel is necessary for the executive set.
To be present.
But that removed any doubt, but I still think it's a discretion.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, Michael, any questions or anyone else have any comments on this one? Was there anything else we had to choose besides that first one? I don't think so.
Yeah, and personal communication devices on page three, about two thirds of the way down.
Yes.
Says gaming devices.
And then did we want to add telephone paging devices?
Does anybody, do those even exist anymore?
I mean, gaming devices are pretty much everybody's using their cellphone, I'm assuming that correctly.
Well, there's the switch, there's a switch that they have now, they're one of the things that kids probably carry around.
Do people carry switches? I mean, Nintendo switches, they're for example.
Yeah, well, I mean, if they, if they're gonna be somewhere for a while, they might carry it so they can play.
Now, if we don't include that telephone paging devices, is it still, we'll include and or other web enabled? That's included, right? So.
So many telephone pages.
I don't think.
Pages.
I don't know, I mean, do people, does anyone know someone who has a pager?
I mean, could we do it, I mean, Ron, could we do like a broad, and like, hey, any devices? I mean, any devices, meaning, but, I mean, paging, I mean, that's kind of.
I, I think I would suggest that only because we're in the definitional sections. And we don't know how those definitions might come into play later, more subsequently.
And they, they, they're gonna change too, I mean, who knows what's gonna be invented in the next year that.
We'll want to add.
So I think, I think having that last part, other web enabled devices of any type.
Kind of covers everything.
Kind of covers everything, right?
Increase elasticity, elasticity would need as, as things evolve, because.
It does update, like the bylaw, zero one seven one point one is, is updated in there. But I believe that is the last of the options. I can make those changes and have it ready for the next board meeting.
Okay, that'd be great. The next policy, fifty five seventeen point oh one, bullying.
One thing I don't like, but I'm not sure we can change is I don't like calling somebody a victim of bullying. I really don't care for that, but that's, I think the law uses that too, I think. I just think that that makes me even that much more of a victim than, but that's just my personal. And you know, in some of our curriculum, we, we got away from using that verbiage in the schools, but I think we might be, we might be.
Now, are we, are we, Ron, the only reason why I'm saying this is just because, my wife being a principal, bull, excuse me, bullying, is it, do we get parents saying my kids were bullied at school? And then we as principals and or administration have to figure out, I guess, navigate what is considered bullying? In the sense, I mean, I, I guess my, my question being is that anything can be bullied? And the kid said, I, you know, my hair's going gray, that's bull. I mean, so do we navigate that? I mean, I guess my question is, in a broad sense, and I guess more elementary.
Are, are principals do that? And, and I think they do a good job of it. There's a, there's a definition that, that has to be followed, it has to be repeated. I mean, there, there are certain criteria before it's classified as bullying and other than just being a mean kid. So our principals are pretty good at navigating.
But as Mr. Mark was alluding to, and to, to a couple, Mr. Mobs, I think Mr. Mark used the term investigation.
Yep, absolutely, yeah, so, yeah, so the principals will do an investigation. There's a pretty detailed form that they fill out and that talks about, you know, what happened, who, who was involved. And then it's logged with the power school so that if it, it does become repeated and meet the definition, then those, you know, can be reported as so.
And the only reason why I'm asking this is because do we, and I, I'm not saying that we're, we're, I guess, making sure that all kids are protected at schools, but are, are parents, and, and, excuse me if I'm saying this, but are parents overusing the word? In the sense of making sure that, you know, we have repeat offenders because the parents are insisting that it is what it is? I guess my.
I would blame the parents, I mean, they're just going on what they, what they know. And, you know, we, we try to educate them as we go through this process, principals. They do an education of the parents and sometimes the parents agree, sometimes they don't. But a lot of parents, I think, just don't know what the, what that definition is. We provide it, you know, it's out there for them to see, but, and I, I might be speaking out of turn here, guys.
But I think my points will all take and I, I always have been harping for years, don't tell me Johnny can sexually harass Jane. Tell me what happened and then we'll figure out what constitutes. And I think it's the same analogy would be applicable to the term bullying too. And I think our principals are well instructed and I think we'll be fine.
Yeah, I think they do a good job.
Interesting though, of what has been referenced, what we find, and I definitely found when I was a dean of students, assistant principal and also school principal, is that once the investigation has thoroughly been exercised, more facts of the case or the matter come about. And more often than not, there's corporal parties across the board, especially the younger, the student. Definitely by, by middle school, in elementary, but to your point, bullying has been a term that has been used for some time and even more loosely here within probably the last ten, fifteen years. But as Mr. Mobs alluded to, once definitions are clearly stated and we educate parents and guardians, they then have a better understanding, especially with the criteria that has, has to be met. Growing up compared to how we were reared and sometimes there in the neighborhood or within the school, things are a little different. But pushing them to show, those investigations typically reveal the true nature of what's going on. And oftentimes, of what we found, and again, I think our reports would share that it's, it's not deemed as bullying as much as it is misbehavior, insubordination, study in the wrong direction, or there are corporal parties through the group. And so, but yes, to answer your question, bullying has been a, a, a term that has been used quite readily and.
Yeah, I, I mean, of course, I mean, I know we can't control everything, i.e. when it comes to Facebook, when you see, speaking of Richmond, when it comes to people interpreting and using social media as a platform to, I guess, negatively project Richmond Community Schools and or a teacher or a principal. And those are the things that really, you know, from a, from a board, kind of irritates me because it sounds like, you know, it's almost like a sympathy thing, like, oh, I need sympathy. I need, I need something to feel good that I wasn't wrong, but I am wrong, but let me get the affiliation of friends, so, social media friends. And so I'm trying to figure out, you know, Ron, is there any way, and not that I'm, we need to control the media or control social, but is there any law that prohibits us from saying, hey, this is not fact from a school? Or do we just let that run from the social media standpoint? And not really.
Well, I, it's, the social media is such an individualized phenomenon that I would be hesitant to advise a single board member to engage significantly in such activity is in such interactions, even when your position is probably gonna be one that all separate board members would agree with. But I, I just think that's a slippery slope. I guess part of being elected officials is having the, the highs, some of these.
Right, and I think to, to, to add to what Attorney Cross is alluding to, you know, one of the things that we talk about consistently is accuracy, mindfulness, and, and follow, follow through. Because trying to keep up as you just alluded to, trying to keep both social media and, and the wild west of the, the online internet virtual experience is next to impossible. And most often times, it's saturated with, with inaccuracies, confusion, falsehoods, narratives. It'd be great, and I think getting to your point, it'd be great if, if there were moments and opportunities in which we could reveal the full facts of particular.
I mean, AI does a pretty good job on Facebook and Twitter, right? And it's like, this may be false because.
No, no doubt.
Right?
Yes, but, but the, the challenge that we have is that we also have to be protective of faculty, staff, students, and also stakeholders. Protective of privacy, protective of, of particular matters that could become legal. As a result, to your point, Mr. Elroy, I guess, very challenging not to be, not to have an opportunity to respond with the full fledged of, of information that could help clarify what may have been posted or what may be.
And that, that applies with some degree of consistency with the news media. But I think there are top, maybe times and I felt like there was a, at least an occasion where there was a duty on, and I took it on myself since I know I'm, I don't know who my client is, in terms of the board, in terms of the school corporation, whatever, to correct a, what I consider to be a very inaccurate news article that's in, in the local media, so, I mean.
Do we, do we guide our teachers and administrators for getting into the sludge? I mean, do we say, hey, check this out, but we don't comment? I mean, I, I guess that's a protocol that you guys follow, I'm assuming all teachers, all, all principals follow that. Like, hey, look, get my name dragged in the mud, but obviously, it's false.
Yeah, we definitely try to make sure that our response is universal. We fact find and through discovery, we learn of, of the true nature. And we advise our faculty and staff accordingly. But pushing them to show a lot of times, what our protocols, administrative guidelines call for is for our communications specialist, as well as central officers, help try and, and guide and navigate those, those unfortunate stories that were, they, they arise.
Um, the section we're adding on remedial action and documentation, all of that, we are doing already, right? We just didn't have it in this policy, is it in the admin guidelines or?
We do have admin guidelines and I need to update this, so I'll, I'll send that in. I'll make a note to send that in because the admin guideline is actually forty five seventeen, fifty five. So I'll send that in too, along with this.
Okay.
You get that, that number updated.
Any other questions or comments with Policy fifty five seventeen point oh one? And moving forward.
By the way, they must have an English teacher on the staff, he doesn't like a boss there, he's a gom.
Yeah, lots of.
Be me, because I, I got a pocket full of those and I use them all the time.
I'm very afraid of that.
No one to breathe.
And AI tells me, tells me I'm wrong all the time too, so that's all right.
Okay, the next policy, which kind of goes along with our conversation we're having, is ninety one thirty, public complaints and concerns.
And we've hit this one a few times. So it looks like it's just a few technical corrections on there. There is, there is an opportunity for a lot of choices from the board. So if you want to start running through those, there's a bunch.
I think we'll start with D, it looks like is at our first choice. When things reach the fourth level, this is regarding matters regarding professional staff members. And this is once something has been referred to the superintendent, and this is the protocol for the superintendent.
You could back, there's one under A also.
Oh, I missed that one, okay.
And you could put in there if you know, I think we have that, that established right already, that, you know, they're to go to their media supervisor. We have that in there if they want to report something. Yeah.
That makes sense for talking about changing, yeah, I would add that.
Okay.
However, if, if you all mind, if I can just pose a few questions here from the opening paragraph. As, as it reads, for those millions watching at home, any person or group having a legitimate interest in the operations of a school corporation, shall have the right to present a request, suggestion, complaint, or concern relating to the corporation personnel, the program, or the operation of the corporation. At the same time, the school board has a duty to protect its staff from unnecessary harassment. It is the intent of this policy to provide the means for judging each public complaint and concern in a fair and impartial manner and to seek a remedy where appropriate. It then goes on to say, it is the desire of the board to rectify any misunderstanding between the public and the corporation by direct discussions of an informal type among the interested, interested parties. It is only when such informal meetings fail to resolve the differences shall more formal procedures be implemented. In requests, suggestions, complaints, or concerns, and that we have to make a decision there, the board, board members, and the administration shall be referred to the superintendent for consideration according to the following procedure, the procedures listed. My question, Attorney Cross, as it, as it reads here, is only when, is only when such informal meetings fail to resolve the differences shall more formal procedures be implemented. Of those informal meetings, I assume that is meetings between, whether it be department chair, assistant principal, principal, central office leader, superintendent's office. Is that, is that, that those informal meetings and, and once a matter has not been met in that informal ching per se.
I mean, I could even see it even starting at department head.
Yeah.
Depending on the nature. It says public complaints, so we have a lot of overlay here with the Senate Houses and Road Act fourteen forty seven as relates to library materials and injections that are, you know, whole process and procedures. Yeah, I, I, I think that's the, I think that's the, the intent, and that's also, and, and it's tough on school board members, you know. I tell you why, you really probably get rid of a lot of pressure if you would just have COVID delivered to your house. But, you know, you see, you get, you ought to get caught, you know, in the aisle of the grocery and, and, and the temptation is to have an answer and, and there are times, the answer is, well, I don't know, but I can, I'll refer that to someone and we'll make sure that somebody gets back to you. And then if you got word, and that spectrum of authority is the proper place for it.
And I, I think that's where we've heard Member Stevens in past practice reference and state. That's, it's a great piece of advice as far as for board members, maybe to have COVID delivered there to their home, but nevertheless.
That's funny, I know.
Yeah, a little tongue in cheek there, but, yeah, I, I can recall Member Stevens making that same point, which is upon being approached in public, his, I think his go to response is, I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. I will now forward that to the respectful, respectful level of, of, to address the matter. And, and he, he leaves it as such. I think I've even heard, I believe, other board members reference that sometimes they'll respond with such verbiage that allows for their constituency to understand and know that they're only one member of the board, not the collective chef. And also that their role is to notify and try and, try and turn the constituent back to such an informal process.
But that's, that's human nature, I mean.
Oh, absolutely.
No, I, I, I wish I could have a nickel right now, I'm sitting, are you still on the school board? Well, no, I'm not, and I don't think I ever have been.
You never have.
I have, I don't think I've ever had a vote.
You sit with us, yeah. No doubt, but no, it's, I just wanted, they, they didn't inform, maybe just want to make sure that I understood correctly. Sorry, Ms. Mobs.
Really, that first word, reaching and regarding, changes the, the intent of that sentence in a way. But, I don't, I mean, because it's really, at first, we had reaching and saying anything that comes to us is the way I read it. And then now it's changed to anything about us, which is a very different interpretation of it. But, I mean.
I know.
Right, I mean, that's two very different things.
Two very needed, yeah.
I mean, I guess Neola is suggesting regarding, so I don't necessarily have an issue with it. I just notice it very much changes the.
And to have it in the, jumped with and, I mean.
And then really the second, regarding the board, board members, so it's kind of like, it's, I'm, I'm fine with it, but. So if we get to that A, first level, and Dr. Wright, this is kind of your section here, because this is when things reach to you. I mean, do you, do you agree with that, we choose that first item, which says the action taken to the immediate supervisor? For, uh, first level? Second level stays as is, third level, and we have some choices here. And I guess that first blank would be with the immediate supervisor. And then I guess, Dr. Wright, do you have some suggestions here, since this is a request that is going to be sent to you?
They were.
This is level three.
Yeah, three levels.
So if the plaintiff and the supervisor did not come to an agreement, and so now they're gonna provide a written request for a conference that will be submitted to you. Seems like you want all three of them, but I don't know, I mean, do you want, I mean, you want as many details as possible? I don't know.
I think the more details it covers.
I think you would want all three.
Yeah, we do.
And, and Dr. Wright, do you want superintendent or do you want superintendent? Superintendent and or designated?
And or designated, and or designated.
You can add that extra.
Yeah. And that's, that would be.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, just to make sure it's consistent where we go.
Because the safety route of medical.
Yeah.
And or. Yeah, that was where she's just, I speak to the cop layer over here, so.
Way to go with this, man.
Good job listening. I'm not one to take pride.
Okay, you can take.
But I think, I think that's fair, I think.
And then all three of those.
Have that on.
All three.
Okay.
Okay, and then fourth level. This is if it's still not resolved after that conference with the superintendent. And this is when it requires, requires the board to be involved.
Do we need to state how many business days?
I, I mean, we, we, in the past, I think, tried to stay away from the specific number of business days, depending upon the investigation, depending upon schedules that they don't line up. I think in the past, we've used timely fashion or such, such verbiage that.
Kind of keep it subjective in the sense of.
For the most part, because if, if an investigation, if in the middle of the investigation, we realize, you know, what, we need to go back and, I mean, that's, we can, yeah, someone's, and if there may be scheduling conflicts, whereas you put the, within five days, like in five days, you may just have an update that, you know, what we're still, so in the past, we've figured out it's timely fashion, verbiage or such.
I would think that if they are providing a written appeal.
Yeah, but I think we want to have a number of days there. Because, so what it is, is, so you didn't get the answer you liked. So that limits you, you can't go a month from now and go, you know what, I really didn't like that decision thirty days ago, so I'm gonna appeal to you now. What it, that, what it says is, you get so many three days or five business days or whatever you want to make it, that they can.
Oh, yes, appeal, yes.
Yeah, and if you want to appeal to the board president and the superintendent.
I think they should appeal to both.
Okay.
I mean, what, what are you thinking?
So then it's a two to get process. Well, they.
If somebody's gonna do the appeal, it begins with a fourth, but anyways, that's.
Five business days?
Five business days.
So in the, well, in the next section, it says the complaint shall be advised in writing of the board's decision within thirty business days. So that has a standard already set time you can't change. So do we, do we set a matching reciprocal at the top? I know thirty days is a long time.
It's a month, yeah.
No, but this is just the first. Option is how many days to make a written appeal for the next level. I think five days seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, it's time, yes.
But they've already gone through all these steps, they're.
I think what we were referring to is the actual, that's the actual process.
Oh, yes.
But I think it's important to understand that historically, I think every RCS school board that I've advised has exercised its option not even to be a recipient of an appeal involving student discipline. Expulsion, what have you, yeah.
Okay.
It's, that's been their, that's been their policy in the past, I think it's a slippery slope because you know, you know, the ability to, it's almost impossible to measure that if you don't have either a video or some type of firsthand knowledge of what went on at the investigation hearing or the conference, and they're not, sometimes they're not hearings. And then if there is egregious wrong, the parents have the right to appeal directly to the circuit court. I, I, I think the board involvement between the final step and the discipline and the parental decision to move forward with litigation is just difficult. Most boards, like I say, I can't, I think we've done it maybe once and it was not very good, I can remember that, in court anyhow. But that's been years ago.
So do you want to take them?
Now, wait, this is, we're just talking now about matters regarding professional staff members only, so, right? We're not talking about. We're in the very.
Yeah, this is from professional.
This is professional staff members only.
Okay.
So if it's a student, yeah, I can see that, I don't, I don't want to be involved in that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, yeah, they're right.
Yes, that's good.
But I think a professional staff member, I got to agree.
Well, there's plenty protections out in there, they have the right to representation, whether they're certified, they're certificated, jury warnings, sometimes legal procedural.
Now, is there any reason why this board president should not get the appeal at that level? And only the superintendent should? Because what if the board president gets some information that may alter what they feel about if it's gonna go to this jury type situation? I don't know, maybe they should just, if it's just an appeal and doesn't have information, I don't know. And that's in the first paragraph. Because originally I thought, oh, the board president and the superintendent should get the written appeal, but if the appeal would provide information that would put the board president at, I don't know, what do you think around that?
Yeah, I think it could compromise the situation, depends on the level. If you're gonna get a ten page diary, it's gone back two weeks.
That's wrong, one doesn't.
Yeah, so you gotta protect.
I think that, I think the board president should be advised, filed by the superintendent. I don't think that is a problem, you know, you need to know.
You need to get the weeds.
Okay, so.
Take the board president out?
Yeah, take the board president out, yeah, and then the superintendent, obviously, it's gonna go to the board level anyway, so, okay.
So then five business days.
Five business days, I think.
So then the board, after reviewing all the material related to the case, shall either provide the complaint with its origin or. Either provide the complaint with its origin or with a written decision or grant a hearing. Before the board, before a committee of the board.
I I mean, what's past practice?
I know, that's what I'm, I mean, I've never sat in and on a hearing and received any written information, I guess, regarding an appeal.
Provide the complaint with its written.
So I think the problem with this whole paragraph is usually what she'll. Right, I think they're making situations you're quite comfortable going on the record you're presented, you know, it's the investigation other times. We may wish to, I wouldn't call it a hearing, but at least have a conference. Or, I mean, I, me, I mean, that should already have made.
After the board, after reviewing all material related to the cli- case, may.
But can we choose two, I guess, as I say?
Just choose one of the following two options.
I think.
You know, I can take it all out, too. Tim, you could take it out, too. I mean, if you don't, if you don't wanna get in the business of.
I don't wanna be.
Is then you can just take it out and say, you know what, the buck stops with the superintendent, he's, it's his employee.
And that was kind of my question, is the appeal is only made to the superintendent and the board isn't even involved, then really, what is the?
Paragraph of.
Yeah, the role of.
And then, and then if they don't like the superintendent's decision, then they can go to litigation like Ron said. I mean, to me, it gets you out of it. And that way you don't have rocks thrown at your car as you're driving down, or you're accosted and proper, because you made a decision that isn't popular. I mean, it just takes that off, that burden off you, that's.
I think the challenging part as the board is we don't ever have the information, because we don't, you know, we haven't. We haven't sat in an H R meetings, we haven't sat in interviews or read, so we don't know. Know what we.
I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna tell me what happened, but I.
Well, I think I think I take it out, but you gotta re- realize, you've got grievance procedure in place, yes. For those who are uh subjects of like, arguing.
Right.
And I think we've even kind of. When we had our non-certificated uh employee handbook, if you will, or guidelines, we kind of incorporated those same due process procedures. Leaving flexibility.
I don't wanna be given the chance to be a judge juror, I guess that's my point, is I don't need to be, my mind is to guide. Around a school corporation, and we can guide by principles and and guidelines, but I'm not, I'm not in charge of hiring and firing. Yeah, I mean, I.
So, Mr. Cross, would you suggest just taking out the fourth level completely?
Yeah, cause we are dealing with.
Yeah.
What about leaving in that last paragraph, though, with the complaint and contacts an individual board member? I kinda like that.
To protect, yeah.
I mean, it says, you know, we know it's either.
Yeah, I I think I think we should put, leave that in there, give you guys, hey, look, we were contacted by such and such.
Then that goes back to what Ron said.
Because if anybody was gonna file a lawsuit, they're gonna list everybody. I mean, that's how lawsuits are. I mean, they're gonna list the board members regardless of anything, so.
Okay, so we're gonna remove that fourth level, except for that paragraph that will go up to the third level, I guess.
I think it's just uh not even part of the level, it's just a.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that really speaks to what we just mentioned, which is a, I'm only a uh one seven, uh and. And I think the other caveat to, to where we're at this point, as an oversight body. Not having all the uh facts of matters, uh as Mrs. Bron, uh alluded to, I think maintains the integrity of the process in and of itself.
Has this process been used before? I mean, it hasn't when I've been part of the board, I mean, probably. Not you either, Dr. Wright, because you and I started at the same time, so we've never gotten to the point where the board has been.
I only know of one time.
Okay.
And it was a severe situation that the board didn't want to hear, but. Legally, I think that it was a situation they had to, so legal dictated the process rather than.
The other way around.
Okay.
Yeah, because i- it was just the nature of what was going on, and so um but I don't know that it had to do with. These these layers, because it was an extreme situation that I hope we never have again and workshop by it that moment. So uh but that's the only time I ever remember that ever happening.
It's happened quite, said probably several times in forty seven years, very, you know, I don't, certainly on one hand. And with mixed results, I can remember one in particular where the board. Basically, uh did not uphold the discipline that had been recommended for the teacher. So that, you know, the boards have that discretion. Turned out the next year, the teacher resigned after a minute, but I don't.
Things you remember.
Okay, the next one is the matter regarding superintendent.
So we, I guess we're in agreement, are we in agreement, just leaving the last paragraph in?
Yes.
So is this, this matters, so this is someone who has an issue with the superintendent, is that what I'm reading here? Okay, and that the superintendent would then meet with them to resolve discussion. And then this says a complaint may submit a written request for a conference to the board. It that section, that nice section.
Of thirty days, and I think, again, this is. You have to provide a viable bypass if in fact there's an allegation consistent intended. For that matter, a superior anywhere in the, in the, in the administrative uh supervisor's will charge you both. So you gotta accommodate that with the idea that that is always best human relations to provide. To resolve grievances at the lowest possible level, so if this involves assuming to need a bypass, then you will be able to have direct conference. I I guess I, it's it's gonna be so faxed, I'd say, that I don't know, I don't wanna try to get in that jello on a wall at this point.
I mean, this to me reads, it should stay as is, I guess, if there's.
I would change it.
Yeah. Other than that.
With the fat.
Yeah.
Okay, uh administrative staff member just follows the same procedure as a professional staff member, and then matters regarding support staff member. Um I'd I would probably take the second option if it were me, but it's your option to. And that is, you you wouldn't take it directly to, like.
Um, yeah.
For example, we have somebody that's over the custodian, it's just the rich man's, so the matter may be taken to him prior to be taken to his.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, yeah, the chain of coming in for the second choice. Are you good with that, Mike? Any matters regarding corporation services or operations?
We have a director of operation.
Makes sense to put that there, director of operations. And then the educational program should be uh complaints initially addressed to.
Assistant superintendents. I guess.
Makes sense. And then matters regarding instructional materials.
Assistant superintendents as well, because typically that is led by.
So if there are complaints, concerns about instructional materials like textbooks, who does their criticism?
Goes to the assistant superintendents that are part of whatever they're.
I mean, that's fourteen forty seven all over, and we're just trying to put it into policy, which. I guess I wrestle a little bit, but the statute itself is that detailed that we need to replicate it in our policy. You know, it's like our policies will follow the law.
Right, that's true, too.
Yep.
And I guess if this is gonna be in here, it should include all of options one through six, I would think. Better for the person receiving the criticism to better understand the complaint.
I agree, as much detail as possible.
Yep.
So option B.
I know, so on the library materials piece, could you just add that to the title with instructional materials? Cause it looks like it's the same.
This is literally the library materials, it's lifted right out of fourteen forty seven.
Yeah.
Does it have to be separate? Do you think with all?
Yeah, I think so, because you have, you have a defining standard for library materials, it has to either be obscene or harmful to minors, that's determined.
So it has to be in the policy that way, too, so that it can be.
Kind of standalone.
Yeah.
I don't know what else being addressed, some legislature. Had a bad day.
Okay, so we're on part B, right? So we have a complaint, and it includes all of the one through six item, items, and it's been given to the assistant superintendent. One of the assistant superintendents, so then they get the information. And they may, I would think, may, these are open-ended, they don't have to, may. After advising the length of the complaint.
I don't remember how we, I don't know, remember how our policy.
We can pull that up and I.
Okay, that'd be good.
Read something to sort of, upon receiving the information, the assistant superintendent may. After advising the superintendent of the complaint, and upon the superintendent's approval, appoint a review committee, which may consist of. Those potential fellow complainants, or you add principal, um teacher, who puts some of that.
Administrative staff.
At Friday's. Workshop, I asked one of the attorneys, can't remember who it was, I guess Michelle Cooper, and I, she said, they're not seeing a lot. You know, no, that we don't, you know, cause the the hot list of the books to watch for was presented, you know, was distributed at the time the act was passed. And there were some, you know, if I looked at a few, I mean, yeah, I would have had, I'd had a problem with my kid having, you know. But again, you gotta remember, there's a slight difference between curriculum and shelf library materials. I like her chance to at least, if you're entertaining, continuing, have some, something in your policy. Here on matters related to library materials, I'd like to review the statute and then be set, see what we did when we were under the gun to enact.
I'm I'm.
Really, I can't remember. And again, this is. Knowing the uh. Multiple executive orders have come forth for federal and uh. State executive branches. Senate Bill one has already had perhaps one casualty with our local east side residential development.
What?
Counsel last night was approached by developers indicating that. After the project, uh receives property taxes. Back to the point where they're gonna have to modify.
It's our financial policy construction. Really?
Yeah. So I mean, I don't know how you size bond issue now with Senate Bill one, if you were using the property tax as the backup.
Thank you, sir. So you're saying. Which were survived.
So this is our previous. I thought, is that right?
Yeah, I'm not sure where it landed.
So that's our previous policy, just for matters regarding instruction materials and the back, uh it doesn't have to clarify.
That may be new because of law change.
Well, it says library books.
Oh, it does.
So we combine them into.
So it would have matched.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable, I mean, have we been through this process with anyone? Anyone remembers this?
I've not, I've never been through it.
We've used groups to adopt, so I wonder if that's just, we haven't had that. As as much as could, I guess.
I mean, I. I can't recall creative materials being questioned, I do know we had a couple of. Been a while, issues. Teacher's choice of classroom displays. And I think takeaway we got. From the. Workshop Friday was, make sure you wanna kick over that rock.
Right, and.
Unless it's really egregious.
I know at a, at a building level, I mean, probably every year we have one kid that would opt out of certain materials.
And that's.
We allow that, there were options.
Yeah, and that normally is, I think, a reasonable accommodation, particularly if the parents.
Then they, yeah, and they were satisfied with, we would make sure they were okay.
No, it's pain for the teachers, cause it, you know, there's. I would think with that, some obligation to at least review the work product, or what, whatever that work product is, with that altered assignment, so I think we have sensitive back.
So with your blessing, I could go through it like a mirror, the old one.
Yep, I'm I'm comfortable, and that, it looks like through F, but then G is new. G is not on, I I don't know if it's somewhere else, but. So I mean, I would say we follow what's been recommended here from Neola with the thirty business days, and then H. Probably add another thirty, I guess, it seems like that seems to be the consistency of that.
Okay. And then I can, I can.
Thirty days sounds long.
Yeah.
You're doing it, you're trying to get meetings.
Looking through the material.
Even though it's could be executive session material, probably, that you can do, you know, one or two members attending virtually. That thirty days creeps up on you, then you got your calendar issues with school, if it happens, November fifteenth, you know.
Yeah. And then I'd say matters regarding school library material.
I can kind of mirror it again.
Yeah, if you're good with that. Okay.
All that cleaned up and ready for the.
Let's move on to twelve twenty employment of the superintendent. Looks like some uh word changes here, so we had in our policy a date that we can now remove, since we are. Moving on past that.
Yeah, that was a technical correction, it was all.
Looks like we add.
And it read cross references it with another, this was a policy.
Changing some pronouns, yeah, I'm, okay, so I guess we have options.
Where are, you you really don't have an option?
Yeah, those four, there's no options there. And then we took out all of the options that they have deleted, we've already taken all those out. I think we, we went through this in one of our working policy groups within, in this year, I think we've, we've worked with this.
So if we're at the board, shall, will, shall actively seek the best qualified, most capable candidate for the position of superintendent? And then, is that? I'm looking at, I don't know, paragraphs of one feet bit, you see the. A, B, C, D, the first time A, B, C, D is listed. Yeah, that are.
Why would you not check them all?
So, I would. It may be aided in attack by A, B, C, and D. All of those from A through G. The included. Then the next choice is A through D. I mean, Ron, you draw up the contract, it would make sense, the contract would include A through D. Specifics.
On page two.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So, the superintendent's contract will include the term, the salary, the benefits.
You'll be amused in notes, I pointed out a couple of people. If you go to the top under G, consideration of all F, it's fairly without discrimination, based on race, gender, age, religion, ethnicity, blah, blah, blah. We sent a. We're having trouble finding public defenders that wanna come to Wayne County, Indiana, for that matter, state prosecutors. So, I can't remember which it was, but we sent a copy of job description over to the state agency, ask if they posted the. Mail back said that we would be happy to post it, but we must delete the phrase that Wayne County, Indiana is an equal opportunity employer. Under the governors. Under their take of the governors, DEI reactions, which I found. Okay, it's scratching at this. Would not agree with the governor, but I would not take it out.
We have it on everything that we send out. It's on everything we send out. It's on every one of our job descriptions.
I mean, it's special guidelines. An equal opportunity is not the same thing as affirmative action, people don't correct that. Okay, down here.
Yeah, I think being from A through B.
Yeah, I mean, it's. And it's actually, I mean, because here again, the statute is just so asinine. It says the contract, the basic contract is the regular teacher's contract, it also says that regular teacher's contract. Is to be used without substantial amendment, so what we obviously do with our, certainly the superintendent, I've done with. Other lesser level administrators, well, we have a contract supplement in addition to. Regular teacher's contract, and that's fine, and that's where we really get into the issues of, you know. Moving allowance, if there's, if it's a relocation situation, things of that nature that. So, that's.
Next, the anti-nepotism. Relatives of the board shall not be employed, sorry.
I think at a community our size, it's difficult.
Yes, I think so as well.
Difficult in a community our size.
Yeah, I, I, I've never seen. It applied in, in public schools, I mean. It just does.
So, I'd say option A. And then when we talk about the superintendent's relatives as well.
So, we can, we're not gonna do A and B, correct? Or maybe employee, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would just say A, yeah. Instead of shall not, so option A. And then I'd say option C as well. We can eliminate. Uh, this is, um, corporation employees may not date. Or have relationships. Option E or F.
That's hard to control.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think we're option B, oh, wait, sorry. Option F, thank you. Yes, option F. Other options to be considered. Need some advice here, I guess, in the HR department, I mean, I think we probably need to say something. Or choose one, or choose some, or.
That second bullet point, uh, provides, I think, some opportunity to maintain some guardrails and expectations.
Any relationship that interferes with the corporation culture of teamwork, a harmonious work environment, or their productivity of employees will be subject to discipline up to and including termination.
I think the, the next one as well.
Adverse workplace behavior, okay? So, do we wanna go ahead and just choose off the first one, too, all three of them, the first one just says, hey, you can have friendships and relationships, but then it cuts. As long as a relationship does not have a negative impact on the worker, work of others.
Maybe, maybe you can't, dark means, like I said, with law, dark years. I agree.
Miss even just says develop friendships. Maybe we don't need that, maybe we just don't put that first one, it's weird.
I mean, I have friends that are teachers and.
When it's written in terms of discipline, that bothers me first of all, because I don't, I, I think the obvious. Option one would be, is there possible to maybe reassign? Someone to get them out of that direct supervisory. The problematic one is supervisor subordinate, um, that's, that's problematic. Obviously, and again, does, I don't like the notion that the transfer, if it's to the subordinate. Could be viewed as disciplinary, you know.
Well, there, I mean, I mean, not to bring up an old hash, but I mean, we're going back to, and I don't have to put down anyone, but in Union County, there's an issue going on right now. This magnitude. I mean. I mean, we, we're not gonna be blind to it, but let's just call a spade a spade, right?
Or, like, under number two, it says any relationship, so it kinda generalizes versus saying specifically dating or friendships. So, I don't know if that, Ron, does that count as enough to cover?
I'm almost back to the point where I think it's, you know, we can stay in general, it's corporation policy to discourage fraternization. Basically, we get at that.
We are still trying not to be preemptive, too.
Oh, it is.
These, these are other options to be considered, correct?
I thought this was just any.
Your example. What not to do, well, yeah. I mean, I guess in the situation, like, what the other county is going through, I mean, how would we handle that, I mean, that's, that's the question. It's tit for tat here and there, it's.
It's a mess.
It's a mess, yeah. Legal standpoint, I mean, how do we protect ourselves?
Because without getting into the weeds for that one, uh. There are all kinds of issues, retaliation being one.
Right? I'm gonna reassign.
Questionable motivations of key witnesses, it's a miss. I would, so while you've seen the big bucks. Even, uh, well, I don't even, uh. Have some proof back, so just get a little back, although, like, consistently do, this is what I've done before, and so.
So, we decided on option F. Um, and then did we decide on the next options to be considered?
Obviously, this is broader than just a superintendent.
Yes, this is just any employees and corporation.
So, any, any relationship that interferes with the corporation culture, I mean, I think we are. Second, just the second one?
The second and the third as well. Adverse workplace behavior.
I think the second one probably covers the third one. I mean, it.
Cause the relationship, if it had adverse behavior related to it, would fall underneath that second one.
Interfere with our own working ground.
That's the harmonious, yes.
Okay, so just the second option, and then we have more options. The superintendent so appointed shall devote themselves to the duty, okay.
I mean.
What is this, why is this here? It feels like it shouldn't even, like, all of a sudden, it's just talking about. I mean, I know this. I've gotten lost in where we are, because this is, this is the entire policy about the employment of the superintendent, but then we're talking about relationships that.
That discusses not, in fact, it says about our application, if you're not truthful on your application.
Include part termination.
So, I think now we're shifted back to thinking about the superintendent on these last four options.
Well, the reality is that we always indicate, there's the expectation that the superintendent will.
Work.
Devote the time and attention necessary to essential functions of the job, but then we also go into. Ownership, develop material, copyright it or professional, and we have lesson plan, we've had a lot, I mean, my gosh. We had one superintendent who basically, I thought, spent as much time on the. Circuit as he did in the office, selling, uh, uh, an educational theory. That was very much in vogue for a while.
Yeah, I know it was, I know who it was. Um, but like, if you look at, Ron, look at the, the person selected position of superintendent. Shall be required to undergo a physical examination for reason of related duties.
We don't require it, we, we all, we encourage it, and we set them a stipend for, uh, that they not consider this. Income, uh, in the con, in the supplement on an annual basis, and I don't know what it is, I think it's a thousand dollars, if I have no. Of, to the extent not covered by insurance.
Right.
So, we definitely wanna choose the first two, right, the superintendent so appointed shall devote themselves to the duty. And then any candidates intentional misstatement of fact material, we wanna keep that, so then the third. We do not, so what I'm hearing is, we currently do not require the superintendent to undergo a physical examination.
We do not.
Take that one out.
Take that one out.
All right.
Anything else on that one? Okay, and, uh, policy twelve thirty responsibilities of the superintendent. Lots of choices here, it's like some changes of pronouns and some additions of words as well. And this is about the superintendent's assigned duties and responsibilities. So, the first one, A, promptly and fully inform the board of any matter or related materials, matters, sorry, involving legal expenses reasonably expected to exceed. Have we had this in our previous policy and what was that amount? And.
I don't know what statute says.
Informing the board.
I'm not familiar with that. When you talk reasonable legal expenses, I guess, some, I would argue an oxymoron, anyhow.
That's a good point.
Now, what they say, it's similar Friday, it's basically, uh.
It's not in our current policy, or past policy, so we could probably take that.
And now it's referring to an Indiana code right there, so I think we must have to put that in there.
Settling the pieces against the school corporation involving, you know, I think, probably, yeah. It should now roughly fifty grand, you know. Your exit amount of now fifty, or, uh, yep, and those would be like five oh four claims, uh, yeah, violation of the. IDA, that type of thing.
Just says that the governing body has to specify an amount.
Okay, so we need to choose an amount, so Ron, what would be a reasonable amount?
It says the superintendent of a school corporation shall promptly and fully inform the governing body of any matter or related matters involving legal expenses. Reasonably expected to exceed an amount specified by the governing body.
So, Ron, you're the expert in legal.
First of all, I mean, any attorney that knows anything about school law. Is not gonna take the superintendent's word for his contract, he's wants, he want, he want his order of contract to be approved by the board. And then that will have terms of compensation on it, so the board. And this suggesting.
There's, if there's any legal expenses.
Yeah, I, that's, that, that's, that's a slippery, I mean, I. Think of what we were talking about on, uh. The well-intentioned, but I thought terribly misguided. County initial superintendents to have MOUs to support the. Retention of at least one professional staff member to be shared among the school corporations for the. Uh, work-based learning component of pathways, I mean, we were looking at a couple hundred grand, and there were, there was one su, one school corporation that just. Superintendent took it to them, they signed off, the board signed it off, you know, okay, well. I thought that was a little bit of a stretch for the authority, the executive, no disrespect to present company intended, but, uh, so. You, you put a number, you know, I mean, my claims. I bill at a hundred and seventy dollars an hour, which is about sixty percent of our regular rate now. We just raised our regular rate to like four hundred an hour, so I'm probably a little behind that, but that's okay. I, we also, I get a participating group health insurance program, but I pay the same thing in, in the other employee. Or lender fiscal is paying for the type of plan, so, so that's, that messes it up, I don't, uh. I guess I would like, I, I, I know at times I'll send Melissa an email saying, can I see someone that statement that came from. Whoever, uh, Churchill or whoever, and I just like to have that as kind of a sanity check, not only for me, but for them, and. Typically, I will tell you, they give you reduced rates of, of charge based on the regular hourly rates and their very.
So, the other thing with this, and I think that some of it, like, and I, like, when there is a situation which dictates. Something be turned into insurance for, for that, then that cap. Is whatever deductible is, but. I mean, I don't know.
To me, we're about fifty thousand. Is that outrageous, or is that not? I mean.
I think, if I were you, I wanna know a little bit before you get to that point, because we have appropriation issues, we have funding, funding issues.
So, there's a, okay.
Fifth assets, I think.
But what we're starting to see, and we heard about, we heard about it, uh. Friday, we're starting to see a lot of changes. In policies to where what we're not, what we would call non-monetary act coverage, that means if you're being. Uh, if there's a complaint filed against you alleging discrimination, that if, and first of all, in and of itself, it's not. It's gonna have to be referred to an agency now, there's some that don't have to now. We have coverage for that, but we have a deductible, and I didn't know what that is, is it fifteen, ten?
It's more now, so I wanna say it's closer, I mean, like, they, all the deductibles changed last year. Um, with the change from schools being protected to schools being market, so a lot of changes. So, it's, it used to be ten, I would say it's either fifteen or twenty-five.
We're twenty-five at the county for law enforcement, and that's, that's the hot topic, you know, for jail. Inmate, inmate actions, I don't like, intriguing. I think we're fifteen for general.
Yeah, all of our deductibles changed, so.
But I think to, to a certain cause's point, that was, something that was referenced at the law seminar, uh, last week, is that many insurance companies are starting to, uh. Reconsider and or even dropping schools. Yeah, I mean, we've seen it with, we've seen it with, uh. Significant drop in coverage opportunities with, uh. County jails, because.
They're even probably have higher deductibles.
No, actually, pulling out the market.
Yeah, I can see that. Why should I have the way they were mutual pulled out? There we go.
Uh, totally. In Indiana, at least. I think you ought to know about it at the twenty-five thousand if it looks at it, but again, recognize that most of the time, you're gonna. Get be, have to approve the contract itself, it's not, you know, if, now, you you approve my charges in a couple of ways, I I, my contract goes before you annually. My bills are in, or if they're outside the contract, or or, I mean, not outside the contract, but they're outside the base retainer. Are on the claim docket or the accounts payable, register, so you have those, so.
Twenty-five?
I think that the, if you need a number, put it in there, but I think like Karen says, that's probably not approach. Or deductible or probably gonna start a counter, deductible.
So next, uh, we put twenty-five in there, and then we move down to sections that we have. We can choose all of these, choose none of these, between C and Q options. C, keep the board informed of school operations for preparing monthly board agendas, providing oral and written communications, schedule management, team committee meetings, and pressing stressful board meetings. That become necessary to keep the board properly informed, I would think we would want to choose that.
Yep.
Yep, and D, that's to comply with all laws, whether state, federal, so I'd say yes, we want D. E, establish and maintain a written educational plan required by law inconsistent with educational goals adopted by the door, board, yeah. F, implementation of current corporation-wide instructional plan, as it applies to each building, yes. Doctor, I speak up on any of these if.
General, I, I, we're good.
Okay, strive to increase efficient use of corporation resources, yes, we definitely want G. Enforce the attendance laws, H, yes. Signing staff to achieve the maximum benefit, yes. Evaluate the progress of professional and support staff for the aim of educational goals, is that, I mean, you specifically or is just you oversee, I guess?
Specifically.
Like evaluate the progress of professional and support staff.
From the attainment of education goals through delegation and through.
Okay, so yeah, okay, yes, kind of put you in charge of analyzing the results of the instructional program development. Yes, recommend changes, so staffing, yes, work cooperatively, yes. And develop personal capabilities and personnel strategies and facility management, yes, work cooperatively with us.
I mean, yes, all of it.
Yes. Strive for the highest standard of personal conduct, perform all other duties as the board may direct, yes, I'd choose all.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on. Policy twelve thirteen point oh one, staff-student relations.
That one's technical correction there, so there's my block there.
Okay.
They have a correction there at the bottom.
Uh huh.
They cross-referenced it and um, I looked at the um. Oh yeah, there's.
There's a choice up at the top there, employee abusive sexual conduct or sexual relationship with a student may or shall. Be placed on leave.
I would, I would say may, uh, because it's an accusation.
Okay.
Till you get.
Okay.
Probably find out pretty quick.
May.
Go on, that gets you.
And then it's, you're kind of taking out the draft, the draft, the board may left to indicate them, include no, some or all examples of boundary invasion.
And we, we've met with the board on this previous this year, and we took all those out.
Yes.
We were.
Um.
Um, page two, that was policy twelve thirteen point oh one.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think that was on Ron's recommendation, once again, to kind of.
So this is only coming back to us because of what changed then?
Uh, it did cross-references.
Oh, the cooperation, okay, good, yes.
Cross-reference there.
Mm-hmm.
And then gives you that option.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this one before we move on? Okay, policy twenty-six hundred, school accountability. Looks like some um swaps from the work director to assistant superintendent.
This is, this is an area that the governor's made a directed, there'd be a study done. To re, to revise the A F grading and all that, I think there's, I think it, that mean we didn't, shouldn't address it, but I recognize that. This is a work in progress that political influences.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, I don't think there are any changes, I mean, it may, more changes may be coming, but right now, we'll just accept the changes from director, change, director to assistant superintendent and move on.
And then we changed the um, the date to.
Yes, I remember our discussion previously about that date change, yeah, so but it's.
So these are changes that I made.
Yeah.
Um, that you had requested.
Yep.
So it looks good, so I'll keep it up.
Yep, next is um one sixty-seven point one voting, and this is just a technical correction.
And I think we're rescinding the entire thing because we put it in another policy.
Oh, okay, so we're just. Getting rid of this entire.
Yeah, this is, this is kind of dabbled into our electronic participation.
Right.
Policy.
Oh.
I think you have it at one sixty-seven point something.
Oh, point one, I believe.
Yeah, and I think I I looked at that and I was satisfied with that.
So we're gonna remove this policy.
Yep.
Rescind it, okay, perfect. Next is one sixty-four.
And actually, I'm sorry, if you look at um one sixty-seven point one, we have it here, there's another one that we reference. It's the, I'm sorry, it's the last policy, we can, we can go through, this one kind of goes along with that one we just rescinded.
Oh, okay. So we're gonna look at meeting of the board, no, wait, I'm confused, the paper said we're rescinding one sixty-four point four.
Yeah.
Yes, once you have seven point one, we're.
Were.
Technical correction.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Goes along with that for total.
Got it, okay, got it.
What we're rescinding this.
Okay, so we accept those technical corrections, and meeting of the board, we are going to rescind because it's part of another.
Yes, right.
Is that, okay, I was confused there.
And sixty, one, one sixty-seven point one, if we look at that one, it's the last one listed, and it just lists the, it was, it changes the reference to a different policy, so it's more.
Okay, yeah, that's just a little technical change, the references, okay.
Yeah, it actually refers you into bylaw one sixty-five, which is where you get into the, into the uh. That's involved.
Right. And so Ron, so um, this one with the, would it just be under consent then? Um, the voting one, since it's just a technical correction, we're just changing the.
Just changing the reference to that.
Yeah.
Cross-reference, yeah.
So it'll just be under consent, yeah, okay.
And then.
Sorry, thank you.
Our final uh policy to look at would be sixteen seventeen weapons. And it's not a long policy, but it has, we're changing, or it suggested a change, a pretty significant change, because before we said that we prohibit administrators from. Possessing, storing, or using a weapon, and now we're saying, except for a person who may. Legally possess a firearm.
Well, you don't have to put that in.
Or. Or. Open carry, I mean, we're, Indiana's has limitations, and while you cannot have a weapon.
On school.
In any chain of school building and what have you, you cannot prohibit an employee from carrying, from having a weapon. In their car, provided the car's locked and the weapon is not visible, and so they can have, you know, we could have an arsenal in the parking lot for all in there, it's all locked. Out of sight, that's, that's statutory entitlement in Indiana.
And Ron, you said employee, is that only to employees or?
No.
Parent, is that to anybody?
To anybody.
Anybody.
Anybody, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, that's fun.
But this first sentence says that you could possess, that any person, as long as they have authority from us, could carry a firearm on school property.
No, you, I think that was intended for your S R I.
S R. Oh, okay. Got it. But we've never had that in before, right, but I guess.
Yeah, so previously, just.
Okay.
Don't ask me to explain the.
Okay.
Your work prohibits administrators from possessing and storing.
Yeah.
Well, interesting enough, and I have to go back and and uh, re-educate myself, but. At one point, uh, and I believe it still stands, um. Schools are now, school boards can can arrive at conclusions as to whether or not they uh, for uh, particular employees to be on. Uh, in the, yeah, in the school building, yeah, school building and classroom, um, I wanted to educate myself on, on some of the uh. The criterion uh to have been back, um, because that is something that our rural school communication, pardon, sorry, rural school corporations. Um, I think even uh, corporation north of us. Um. Few counties northwest exercise, uh, policy allows for classroom educators and administrators uh to uh. Because the distance for first responders to cover uh in some of those rural areas, uh, not. As short as distance is for local law enforcement, and so.
So that if we added that first sentence, it would just mean that if someone, if we wanted to give someone the authority, we could. To carry a firearm in a school. Which would be, for example, our S R Os.
S R Os and or if if, uh, because, and that's why we need to go back and educate, I believe there is a program that the state provides. Uh, for educators to be trained, um, licensed and trained, um, and therefore. Depending upon the board's purpose or or will, uh, such educators could, could uh. Who possess firearms, again, it's, it's, it's rarity in more metropolitan areas compared to rural, but. Another, we have a few individuals who I've spoken with over a portion of time, um, interesting enough, we also have a former law enforcement. That are currently employed with us. They have stated that they appreciate uh such opportunities to to further protect our faculty, staff, and students, but. For the time being, yeah, I think that um, that first sentence would provide you all with autonomy as a board to provide personal influence.
I'm okay with leaving it in, I guess, I don't know how the rest of the board will feel, it just, it doesn't say we're allowing it, because we know that the next paragraph says it's. Like a felony um to have a weapon, but. It does allow for our S R Os. And then the bottom paragraph, looks like it just uh changes, add some plurals to the words, fixes some. Language, some definitions of of weapons.
And then the three options, we had those in our old policy, we had all of them.
Okay.
We allowed all of them.
And so these are exceptions to the policy.
Keep those in as well.
Mm-huh.
All right, I will clean this up and have ready for the night.
Okay, so I think that's all of our policies, so eleven twenty-nine, let's talk about our next policy date. Kind of been successful on our Tuesdays. July fifteenth or twenty-second. Stacy, what's your calendar?
Clear it out for you, the fifteenth looks better, making twenty seconds registration.
Okay. July fifteenth.
I will, I will be with the fans, but.
Okay.
We're on vacation.
You want to skip that on the policy meeting? So we'll plan on July fifteenth at ten A M.
Then I gotta talk to my wife.
Okay, very good, meeting uh, is adjourned. Thank you.